Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council for this lovely Monday evening, July 3rd, 2023, the day before our Independence Day, July 4th. So Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Bokey. Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Sella.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss. And Mayor Whelan.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Now, if you'd please stand and join me first in a moment of silence reflecting on the contributions of so many that have served this great nation culminating in our July 4th anniversary, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you very much. Tonight, we are pleased to have our Proclamations and Presentations section of the agenda include both recognition of the Parks and Recreation Department for Parks and Recreation Month, followed by a business showcase. But first, I'll call on our Chair of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Mr. Jason Gerwin, to meet with Councilmember Donna Anderson at the podium, who received the proclamation recognizing July as Parks and Recreation Month. It's a great pleasure to recognize both Parks and Recreation Month and the great committee that we have here on our Parks and Rec Advisory Board. They bring a wealth of professional experience, expertise, innovation, and ideas to the city for no cost. And that it's hard to find that. Whereas Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Lakewood. And whereas our parks and recreation opportunities are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our neighborhoods, ensuring the health of all residents, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the city and region. Whereas Parks and Recreation programs and events build healthy, active communities, represent our diverse community, are open to all ages and abilities, aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide services and opportunities for those with physical limitations, and improve the mental and emotional health of all residents. And whereas Parks and Recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction, retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetation buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and play outdoors. And whereas Lakewood recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, now therefore, it resolves that the Lakewood City Council declares the month of July as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Lakewood and recognizes the significant benefits derived from parks and recreation resources and confirms its commitment to sustain and maintain our parks and open spaces and recreation facilities for the benefit of our residents proclaimed this third day of July 2023. Jason Whelan, Mayor. Oh, Jason, another Jason.
Yeah.
Would you like to say a few words?
Um, yeah. First, I'd like to thank this council and previous and future councils for your support. This year's theme of Parks and Recs Month is Where Community Grows. And I bought a house here in 2001, and I've watched this community grow. And it's grown because of the leadership of the city council and the citizens pushing that initiative forward. And so what something that makes Lakewood such a great place to live is its parks. And your support proves that. Staff for Lakewood Parks and Recreation is bar none. I would put them up against any Parks Department in the country. The leadership of Mary Dodsworth is just, you can't even put it into words. Her leadership means so much to this community. She's a true mentor and a leader in this community. And with that said, her staff from Cameron Fairfield, to Nikki York, to Sally and Elizabeth in the Senior Center, I mean, the effort they put forward for all of our citizens is cherished by me and I know by the community. That being said, I could have put a couple plugs in. We got the 15th of the month. We got our annual Summer Fest at Ford Stilgan Park. We hope you all, I hope to see you all there. In addition, Tuesday nights, we have concerts in the park through August and stop at the farmer's market before you head to the concert. So with that, thank you, council.
Thank you. I'm gonna take a photo there, Mr. Gerwin, so come on up and we'll join you. Well, great. Next, we have our business showcase. And for this, I had asked Galina Onishenko meet with me up at the podium. And we'll chat a little bit about your incredible business, show a video, and allow some sharing. Well, in Lakewood, we certainly mean business, and especially because of all the incredible small businesses and small business owners that make up the fabric of life for many here in Lakewood. So known for its giant flaky biscuits, The Biscuit House has been serving the Lakewood community since 2016. Owned by a mother and daughter duo, Galina and Sophia, it has become one of Lakewood's favorite breakfast spots. Now, seven years later, they have expanded to Tumwater, opening a second location. Many of the restaurant's employees are women. Galina and Sophia are proud to create a space where women and mothers can develop the skills they need to be successful and position them for what's next in their careers. Biscuit House is recognized as the City of Lakewood's July 2023 Business Showcase for its innovation and perseverance through the pandemic, its commitment to providing an excellent working environment for its employees, and for being a local, women-owned and family-owned business. So, Galina, I am pleased to not only read and share those words with the community, but also to present you with this certificate of recognition. Biscuit House, our July 2023 Business Showcase. Biscuit House is recognized as one of the City of Lakewood's the 2023 Business Showcase for its innovation and perseverance through the pandemic. Again, recognizing its commitment to providing an excellent work environment for its employees and for being a local, women-owned and family-owned business, one we can all be proud of. So thank you so much for coming and thank you for your contributions. Yeah. And you're welcome to say a few words, and then we'll take a moment to watch the video.
Okay. As I always share, it's for start, I'm immigrant from Ukraine. And nowadays, everybody knows here a lot about Ukraine, right? And we immigrated to the United States in 1992. My husband and I, we brought seven little children to America, all were under age 10. We had no place to stay. We were refugees. We didn't speak English at all, and we didn't know what we're gonna do in America. But we realized we have so many opportunities. America gives a lot of opportunities for people. And we found our opportunity. I started to learn English with my children right away. And after two years, I was able to get in a chef program, culinary art program at Renton Technical College. And I found it's really matched what I love. And I met so many American people, which were like so touching. They really care about me. They were helping on all different levels. And teachers, my classmates were helping me a lot. And to achieve the goal, I tried so hard. And by the end of the program, I became the excellent student. And I won a scholarship, one of the whole program of 25 students. And by the end of the program, the college offered me the job. And they set me as a cook demonstrator for the program. And for 21 years, I was working with the students. With my not very perfect English, but I met so many hundreds of the students. I spent so much time with them. I learned a lot. I learned on all different levels as a professional servant. And I was teaching students to do that in a practical way. And after my kids grew up, Sophia, my youngest child, we decided, I thought, okay, I can go farther after I got retired from the college of the 21 year. And we decided to open The Biscuit House. And that's a great opportunity to work, to be in a Lakewood city. I love this place, and I love to be around the generous people. And I learned so much about how to give love, attention, how to give joy to people, you know? And be honest, money, they were not my priority, never in my life. My priority was to serve people. And it's worked really good. Now I'm grandma of 26 grandkids. And some of them started to work. First job was at The Biscuit House. I have one grandson, he is a firefighter. Another granddaughter who worked me, it was first job at The Biscuit House, she's a nurse. And I learned it's best way to teach family, not by words, by actions. Thank you so much. I really appreciate.
Do you have a video? So Galina will have a video. Don't leave, and we'll take a photograph.
Hi, my name is Sophia.
My name is Galina. And this is The Biscuit House. We are a woman-owned breakfast place. It's owned by my mother and I, and we serve breakfast to the Lakewood community. Our business running for six years. We opened in 2016. A typical day here at Biscuit House would be starting at 5:00 in the morning. We come in and our team makes biscuits, scones, all by hand. We don't have any mixers or anything that would overwork the dough. And then we bake bacon, we make sausage, hash browns, all of the good things. And when we open at 7:00 AM for service, our team is fully ready for our customers. And we serve breakfast all day, all the way until 3:00 o'clock. The thing that I'm most proud of in our business is the development of people that we have here. A lot of our employees are mothers, and a lot of women come work for us as well. And they develop their skills that they can take on and take to their future jobs or open their own businesses. And we're just so proud to be part of that development with customer service, with professionalism, with skills and assets that they can take on to their life in the future. That most proud of our business, we are, we built a really good relationship with the customers, with our employee. We treat our employee really very nice and respectfully. And our relationship as a mom and daughter growing and make, become more stronger, very mature relationship. And I'm so happy to do this business. Let's be a community together and bring your family and friends and visit us here on South Tacoma Way in Lakewood.
That's fantastic. Cut an example you've set for all of us. Thank you. Yeah, it's just fantastic. Come on up, and we'll do a photograph. This is great. Well, that was lovely, challenging to top that. But we now turn to public comment, which we enjoy as well. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or by live virtual or in-person comment. Comments may be submitted to the council in advance by email or mail to our clerk, Brianna Schumacher, here at 6,000 Main Street Southwest in Lakewood, or certainly by email to bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to all of us electronically. But for purposes of establishing the record, the clerk will read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance.
Mayor Whelan, we received no comments in advance of this evening's meeting.
Very good. Everyone's been waiting to do it in person. So members of the audience certainly may comment on items relating to any matter pertaining to city business here under the public comment period. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. We ask that you queue up to the podium, state your name and general, you know, city of record, so Jason Whelan, Lakewood, Washington, and then proceed with your three minutes. Virtual comments are also allowed here. If you'd like to make live virtual public comments, please join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by dialing the telephone number on the screen, entering the meeting ID number as indicated, and using the star nine feature to raise your hand to be called upon. So tonight, I'll first call on those folks who are here in person. And then I'll call on the folks on Zoom. So those who have signed in include Angie Buckleve, is that right? Buckleve, so come on up, Angie, and then followed by Suzie Hostetter. And then Mr. Gerwin was already here, and then Abraham Maragili. And then if you haven't signed in, have no fear, because we give everyone the full and fair opportunity to just come on up. So after the individuals who have signed in have had their time, feel free to come on up and queue. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor Whelan and Lakewood City Council. My name is Angie Buckleve. Myself and the people behind me are owners of the Clover Creek Crossing condo association. We reside at the corner of 112th Street Southwest and Gravely Lake Drive. Our addresses are 11206 and 11208 Clover Park Drive Southwest. We are a beautiful 10-unit condo. We are here for two reasons. First being to thank you for the work which has already been done on the corner of 112th Street Southwest and Gravely Lake Drive Southwest, and to let you know that further measures need to be taken for the safety of our residents. There is still an ongoing issue going west on Gravely Lake Drive Southwest towards Nyansha Road. We have had two incidents in that area in a year, the last one being May 27. The car was able to penetrate through our brick wall, causing $9,000 worth of damage in addition to the possibility of our insurance premium raising or the possibility of us being canceled. The other incident before this one did not penetrate the brick wall. Instead, the car at fault hit one of the smaller boulders, launching it over our brick wall into our parking area. No one was injured in any of these incidents. However, the mental pack is real. We feel for safety purposes that more protection could be, should be implemented to avoid further issues. We are readily available to work and meet with our Lakewood Engineer Department as we did last time at any time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Kraus, if we could reach out to the Lakewood Police Department and get the May 27 incident report, if there was one taken on that, it would be interesting for the council to know whether or not the offending driver had insurance coverage, and if so, whether a claim has been made.
No, it was covered, and there was no insurance.
So it would be nice to also follow up to see if that person was cited and whether any sort of infraction or otherwise was issued out of the Lakewood Municipal Court. That would be of interest to me. Thank you. Next, Suzie Hostetter.
Hi, it's really nice to see all of you here tonight. We were here two weeks ago, and some of you weren't. You were all on the screen. Anyway, I too live at Clover Creek Crossing and have lived there for about 30 years, even before it was made into condominiums. And we have experienced there so many traffic incidents over the years that there are just too many to count, and I'm serious about that. And Mayor, you mentioned, as we were speaking in the hall about, oh, yes, I remember, a car going over the berm and landing in somebody's house. That was mine. That was my condominium. And that was pretty horrible, I'll tell you. It was one of those things that you can't really believe is happening, but it happened. And we were so grateful to the Lakewood Engineering Department. They came in and did a fantastic job, but it's not quite enough. We still have an issue on the western part of Gravely Lake Drive heading towards Nyansha. We need some bigger boulders there, because that's where the last two accidents, I don't even want to call them accidents, because their incidents have happened. And we feel that there would be more protection for us as traffic gets worse, as drivers get worse. You know, the deal. It's not so good around here sometimes. Anyway, I did reach out this afternoon in an email to Paul Busic. Hopefully, he will get back to us. I'm assuming that he will, and we'll get some better reinforcements out there.
We appreciate it. Yeah, thank you for coming and giving us the update.
Yes.
It helps.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Next is Abraham Maragili. If I mispronounce your name, sir, I apologize.
That's all right. Good evening to all of you. I'm gonna be very brief, but this is just the beginning of a series of what we were prevented to state to this council.
And name, sir, and.
I'm sorry. My name is Abraham Maragili. I'm the residence of 9132 Edgewater Drive Southwest in Lakewood. We have owned that property for 15 years, and I am here to discuss that because I still am at loss at why you have made the decision you have made. I'm trying to educate you. I'm sorry to use that word, because we were prevented to present our side to you while you made a preliminary decision. You were presented with this picture. I don't know if you have anything that I could present that over there or not, but that's.
We're familiar with this, sir. We do have it in our records.
Thank you very much. This one, we do have, this is dated 2007. Our property should be 18,500 square feet. That's what we based, we paid for, that's what we were taxed for, and paid those taxes as they did those who owned it before us. We also, this is a part of the very same. But the saddest story is that, like a silk worm, it has different forms. You look at these maps, and they are all over the place. And it shows that there was some intent to manipulate the facts. What some they are trying to do, they are trying to ignore three surveys by three licensed surveyors that they have done for three different properties hired at different times, paid by different people, and all seems like they agree that, I'm sorry, that the city is not entitled to more than 60 feet of city right-of-way, 30 feet from the midline, and that the city does not agree to that, doesn't want it. That's why we are here. And I intend to present those to you. These are, you probably have already seen those surveys from others. Based on this paper, we, not only our neighbors to the east is encroaching on our property, but also his neighbor is encroaching on our property. Are we here to make everybody fight with each other here? This is the service you want to do? It's embarrassing. We don't want to fight with our neighbor. They came and accepted us. When we were here last time, they talked about equity. Well, who are we? They accepted us. You didn't. Thank you.
If those are copies that you brought to give to the clerk, we can certainly receive those.
Pardon me?
Sir, if those are copies you'd like to give to the clerk for us to review, we're happy to receive those.
I would be, I think these are very confusing. I request, if you are willing to, we meet and we present it to you.
Thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, we can, because of the ongoing litigation, I understand that. Yep. Absolutely not. Yep. Next, anyone else in the audience wish to address counsel during the public comment period? You're certainly welcome. If you haven't signed in or yet had a chance to speak, you're welcome to do so. Seeing none, we will turn to those who may have signed in virtually to speak during the public commentary. Madam Clerk.
James Dunlop.
Yes, Mr. Dunlop.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, here. My name is James Dunlop, and I am a resident of Lakewood. I went to the meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I want to make a few points. Firstly, there was discussions about equity. And equity is, you know, something you've talked about a lot, and I do not doubt that equity is important. But my concern is that the city talks about equity when it suits it. When it doesn't suit it, it talks about something else. And I'm thinking particularly about the clearances in Woodbrook a few years ago. I mean, I use the word clearance in the Scottish sense of the term when small crofters were cleared out by large landowners to suit their business, business interests and agricultural interests in Scotland, I believe, in the 18th century. And this is essentially what happened in Woodbrook. And as a result of what happened, you know, the scope for affordable housing in Lakewood drastically decreased. I don't know for sure why that happened. Maybe it had something to do with opportunity zones, but the city had, you know, has, in one hand, did something which was completely inequitable for the sake of warehouses, maybe for investors in opportunity zones. That was, that what you did there was completely inequitable. Yet you now start talking about equity in terms of Edgewater Park. I understand it's by, it's, 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 you've got a park by the lake. There needs to be public access. At the same time, you seem to be using the word equity when it suits you. Another point I'd like to make regarding last week's study session, when the deputy mayor talked about needing to educate, the public needing to be educated. I think that was incredibly patronizing. So it's kind of suggesting. So it's kind of suggesting that the people here who are making comments somehow know less than the city council, know less, know less than, than the city. I don't think that's necessarily the case. You, you know, you just say that. You just say, oh, they need to be educated. That is, that is a way of saying, basically saying, they need to shut up. And so I think you have to understand that there is a major trust deficit going on here. You know, you're dealing with one group of people now in Edgewater who have, who feel that, who feel aggrieved. In the past, it's been other groups of people, and it seems to be kind of, you know, divide and rule. Anyway, I think you really need to seriously consider what you're doing. Anyway, that's all I'm going to say. Thank you very much for hearing me.
I don't see any other hands up, Madam Clerk, but I see names on the screen. Any other individuals appearing on Zoom that wish to be recognized to speak during the public comment period?
Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Very good. Then I'll declare the public comment period closed. Now turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the City Council Study Session of June twelfth, twenty twenty-three. B, approval of the minutes of the City Council Meeting of June twentieth, twenty twenty-three. C, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of four million, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirty-nine cents for the period of May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three through June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. D, approval of payroll checks in the amount of two million, seven hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and eighteen cents for the period of May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three through June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. E, motion number twenty twenty-three dash sixty-five approving a lease modification agreement with One Hundred and Seventh Street Building LLC for Tactical Tailor. F, motion number twenty twenty-three dash sixty-six approving the twenty twenty-fourth South Sound Housing Affordability Partners Shape Budget. G, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board Meeting Minutes of May fourth, twenty twenty-three. Two, Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board Meeting Minutes of May eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Three, Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. And four, Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you very much. Is there any item on the consent agenda which any council member wishes to remove from consideration at this time? If not, then I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Been moved by Deputy Mayor Moss and seconded by Councilmember Branstadter that we adopt a consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda has been adopted. We now turn to the regular agenda. Ordinances. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number seven eighty-nine, adopting twenty twenty-three amendments to the Lakewood Comprehensive Plan, future land use map and zoning map in Lakewood Municipal Code Title eighteen A.
Thank you very much for this. We'll call on our long-range and strategic planning manager, Ms. Tiffany Spear, to give us an overview on ordinance seven eighty-nine.
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So as you know, within the last month or so, this has been before you. There was a study session on June twelfth. There are nine total amendments proposed in this year's package to amend comprehensive plan, either policy text or zoning. And then on July third, tonight, you're scheduled to take action. There was a council public hearing on June twentieth. And essentially, after that conversation and the discussion at the discussion, study session, sorry, on June twelfth, there was a request by council to take a look at twenty twenty-three oh five in particular relating to the emergency housing and emergency shelter overlay options. And so that's what I will be focusing my time on here with you tonight. So first of all, the very basic under the state law HB twelve twenty, which is the basis for this action this evening, is that all zones that allow hotels and motels within the city are where the city must allow emergency shelter and emergency housing. So on this map, you'll see that in all of these orange or red colors. Those are the parts of the city where those are currently allowed. And then what happened with the Planning Commission is they took a look at expanding beyond just those areas in order to allow a little more dispersal of the types of housing we're talking about to more of the city. And so they went with a distance of within one mile of major transit stops as defined in another state bill that was adopted this year, eleven-ten. So you'll see on these maps, the top one with kind of the pink circles, those are in the center, major transit stops in the bill. So there's one at Sounder Station and then there's one scheduled down in Tillicum. And admittedly, that is not planned until, for completion until twenty forty-five. And then the other one that is also included in the map you're about to see is this corridor B from Pierce Transit, their bus rapid transit option right now, which is still also understudy. And once it gets started, it would take seven years to complete. So it is something that there is not a completion date at this point. So this map has a lot on it. I'll spend a little bit of time here. Essentially, this is our zoning map, but what we've overlaid on it in the bright purple are the routes that are the bus rapid transit as planned, as well as the selections in, and they're very small, but in kind of that light blue color, you'll see those arrows are pointing to those either existing or planned stations, major transit routes. So again, Sounder Station, the Pierce Transit in center in downtown, and then down in Tillicum, where they think that will eventually be built. What you also see on this map are three sets of dotted lines. And these are showing you what are in turn in your memo for this evening, options A, B, and C for potential overlay. So the smallest dotted lines, which are closest to the bright purple in the center of the map, oh, they're good. I can show you right here. So this, this line here, these dotted lines to either side are within a quarter mile of that. The medium-sized lines are half-mile distance. And then the largest dotted hatches here on both sides are a mile away from where those major transit stops are located. So the largest area, that is what the Planning Commission went with in this map, which came to you as a recommendation. So all of this lighter teal color in the central and eastern portion of the city, along with Tillicum, as well as Spring Brook, would be part of this overlay. But then there are the, the other options based on council discussion. So here you'll see an option B, which is bringing that in from the full mile to a half mile from major transit. So you'll see it brings it in closer per these dotted lines around here. So it's everything within those two sets. And then you'll still see much of Tillicum is included and about half of Spring Brook. Option C, oops, I'm sorry. Option C brings it in even more. So this is within a quarter mile of those major transit stops. So this quarter here, and it kind of makes a U shape. And then down in Tillicum, it's a portion and about half of the Spring Brook area. Within all of these options, you would not have any of the emergency housing or shelter units built on what you see here other than the teal. So for instance, on this map, the two shades of purple, which are the air corridors, two shades of gray, which are the industrial, the dark blue is public institution. And then the two colors of green are open space recreation. So none of those, no matter what the distance would be, would be included really for emergency housing or shelter units. There was a question about whether the current application that's also before you tonight from LASSA for the Gravel Lake Commons Project was included within any of these potential overlays. They are within actually a very close border to the downtown subarea, and they are within the one-quarter mile distance. So option C, as well as B and A, would include those parcels. And again, if you were not wanting to do an overlay at all, the minimum would be this option D, which is to look at just the commercial zones within the city, and that is where those emergency housing units and shelters could go. So before you then would be a motion this evening to adopt. And then there is a need for you to take some action, to adopt some option, A, B, C, or D, or something else within your purview to adopt. And then once that amendment would be made, then taking action on the ordinance if you're ready to do so this evening. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Ms. Spear? Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Ms. Spear. A couple of questions that I think we touched on them last week, but I want to make sure we, we get this, that I understand this. All the options, or at least option A, B, and C that were put in front of us assumes, at least two of them assume that there's going to be bus rapid transit and that there's going to be this thing in twenty forty-five down in Tillicum.
All three options do that, yes.
So if they, but if they're not there, even if we pass any of these options, is there availability, I mean, have we actually zoned it? Or do we do it in, in abeyance until something is actually built?
Well, if you were to rezone this evening, or I'm sorry, adopt an overlay this evening, then effective immediately, that type of development would be allowed in those areas, regardless of when the transit stops would actually functionally be there and, and operating. So the council could do that. The council could take no action on any overlay and just go with option D. I'm not sure if it's an opportunity to say we would put this in place, but only when those Sounder Station or the bus rapid transit lines are in place.
Because, and, and the reason I ask is honestly, I mean, sound transit is always laid, right? So if they're saying twenty forty-five, we're probably out past twenty fifty-five, maybe twenty sixty. I mean, realistically, they're ten, fifteen years behind usually on anything they do. And then, so, I mean, it seems like it's kind of a nasty thing to do to Tillicum, say, oh, yeah, you got, you've got this coming. They'll inevitably end up with some of these, some of these items because of, of the cost and then, and then they never get, I mean, in their lifetimes, they won't see this transit. So I, I am concerned about that. And, and the same thing with bus rapid transit. I don't think it's, I mean, they haven't put in the other one yet. So I don't know that that's, those ingredients are even coming together either. So I, that's my concern, I guess, and you've answered it. Thank, thank you very much.
And if I could, Mr. Bokey, Councilmember Bokey, just another comment with the Planning Commission's recommendation. When they made it, they really didn't know the twenty forty-five dates. And so they were assuming at the time that it would be built faster than that. So you might take that into consideration as well.
They had a better crystal ball. Mr. Anderson.
I share Mr. Bokey's concerns because of sound transit. And having served nine years on the Pierce Transit Board, I have no clue where they're going to get the money for that under the present taxing mechanisms that they have available. They'll have a hard enough time maintaining our operations. Get to that second major. Is, is there anything in option D which is not required by changes to state statute?
No, option D is exclusively responsive to the minimums of twelve twenty.
Thank you. Why don't we pull that up just so we have it in front of us too, Ms. Spear?
Mr. Branstadter.
Yeah, Ms. Spear, with respect to options A, B, and C, and the calculation of distances from bus rapid transit routes. The discussion here talked about the primary route without a, without a date to start it, that will take seven years from whatever that date is, was for the route that would go from downtown to Tacoma Mall and out here to the transit center in the downtown, being able to go and do that. But it looks like, although it wasn't included in the discussion, that the options were constructed also anticipating a bus rapid transit route along Bridgeport. You know, that, you know, sort of provided those, those areas along Bridgeport, which is how it got extended over into, into, into Oak Brook and some other areas. So we kind of got a V in that. That seemed to be the alternative route that at one time Pierce Transit was considering as their second BRT project. But that if they prioritize to do the one on South Tacoma Way and going on, then there's really no real, real good basis for a date to do that or to do both at this time. So, but, but did we include both routes because of some information from Pierce Transit? That those are both going to be BRT routes at some point in the future?
Excuse me, Mr. Branstadter, Councilmember Branstadter, I'm trying to just react to you. So at the time that these maps were created, it wasn't quite sure to staff where the BRT routes were going to be. And then since then, as you see here between the time of the Planning Commission maps and what you see before you this evening, I received an update from Pierce Transit Staff saying this is the preferred route at this time between Tacoma to Lakewood. And so if you were to go with this route that you see here, the option, our corridor B for option two, that may actually change where your quarter mile and half mile and everything else looks like on this map. However, it's still up in the air. Pierce Transit hasn't, hasn't made its final decision. And it's not only the timing, but the, the actual pathway for that BRT route.
Thank, thank you. And then I had one other question. The, um, this is all about shelter beds. And the, our existing situation is unfortunately that we have eight.
Correct.
Where are they physically located?
Uh, they are all owned by LASSA. And from what I understand, they are in the same vicinity as twenty twenty-three oh four, those four parcels. So nearby their office. Am I right? No, sorry. Mr. Burel, correct me.
Mr. Branstadter, this is the subject about LASSA and the ownership of those units. We'll come back to the City Council at your study session next week. Some of the comments that we've received from LASSA is those units that are currently there are really not theirs, but belong to the Tacoma Housing Authority and are something that they will obtain ownership in the year twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so, so, so my, my issue is they exist now.
They exist now, yes.
And they're located within those group of four parcels that LASSA has assembled?
They are not on all four parcels. They are primarily on one parcel. The other three parcels have existing single-family residences on them.
Okay, so. I think it would make sense to whatever we do this time to make sure that, that those particular shelter beds, which is what we're trying to decide where shelter beds should be, are within where we are. So if we were to choose option D and then amend option D to include every place where hotels and motels are allowed, plus the the five-one-three, zero-zero-zero, one-six-seven, one parcel, that would then bring that, those shelter beds, because even though who operates them is going to change, the, the, the plan is they're going to continue to be there. And they, and, and they are the resource that this whole exercise is designed to do. So we could amend option D to just add that parcel without having to actually create an overlay?
I think the issue, Councilmember, will be whether that is a parcel adjacent to, for instance, the red that you see on this zoning map, which is the downtown subarea where hotels and motels are already allowed, or if it's one of the other three that are not adjacent. It's going to be something where you're, maybe the city attorney can assist here, but whether it is a spot zone because it's not adjacent immediately to. whether it is a spot zone because it's not adjacent immediately to other parcels already being rezoned. Yeah. Okay. So the city attorney is saying that she's concerned about that. If they're not immediately adjacent, that it would be a rezone, that's a spot rezone that is not allowed under this process legally. So if, if
So, so this, so if we were to adopt this, this way and say, these are where these are allowed, then, and we don't include in some manner where they exist, then they're a non-conforming use?
Go ahead.
Very technically speaking, those units on that one parcel of the four that LASSA owns are not shelter housing. They are permanent supportive housing.
That's what I was thinking. It had nothing to do with this definition.
I, 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 I just think that the, the information we've had in discussions is that they are saying that's, those are the only units that we have in Lakewood that are shelter housing for families. But, but they're not, they're actually permanent supportive housing. They're not emergency shelters.
Up until 2025, that is correct.
What happens in 2025?
All right, thank you.
What happens in 2025?
The current agreements with Tacoma Housing Authority and Pierce County Housing Authority expire. And then those properties, I believe, then become the ownership of uh,
They revert the ownership, but they don't necessarily change the character of the housing.
Not sure about that, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I know they revert to the ownership, as does the units in the condominium, right? Cause you got the Client Services Center and then you got the 14 whatever units.
I, I do know the preference of LASSA is to remove all encumbrances from those units so that they have the opportunity to use them the way they would like to.
Which, as I understand it, is not an emergency shelter.
It's not an emergency shelter at this time.
Okay. Yep. Mr. Anderson.
Uh, maybe Mr. Bureau knows this, is you mentioned both Pierce County Housing Authority and Tacoma Housing Authority. Pierce County Housing Authority is divesting itself of a number of properties, or some of those.
That's true, but there's these underlying agreements which were created many years ago where they still have some level of uh, of a purview. I believe it has to do with the uh, placement of individuals in those units.
Their restrictive covenants.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions of Ms. Spear? Any further comments, Ms. Spear? Anything to clarify?
No, the rest of the amendments, you've had your study session on and public hearing on. I'm not aware of any other questions you would have had on any of those, so uh, turning it back to you for action.
Got it. So as I understand it, first we have to have a motion to adopt ordinance 789 with an appropriate second. And then we can have discussion of an applicable amendment to 789. So do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 789?
Move adoption of ordinance 789.
Second, been moved by Councilmember Branstadter and seconded by Councilmember Bokey. We adopt ordinance number 789. Mr. Mayor, Mr. or Councilmember Anderson.
I uh, move to amend the ordinance to adopt option D.
That's option. He is in dog.
He is in dog.
It's been moved by Councilmember Anderson, seconded by Councilmember Bokey, that we amend ordinance 789 with regard to um, computers, the map, the map, uh, to reflect uh, option D as in dog as a preferred option for that particular comp plan amendment. Did I get that right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any further discussion, Mr. Anderson? You want to speak to the motion?
Yes, I speak to the amendment. Uh, yes, I, you know, I have a, I have a problem with the legislature telling us how to zone. Uh, we need to meet the requirements of law. The map exhibit D or option D meets those requirements. I think the other maps are highly speculative with respect to where transit might be and would be overly broad. Uh, so I would like to uh, see us take a more restrictive route and change as we need to change.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Councilmember Branstadter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, yeah. I'm in favor of option D because it's reflects current reality of what is, what we, what we have, what our zoning is and of what can go on. The other options are all, while they look at transit stops and things to do that on, are both imprecise as to when those transit stops would be there. And we would, could end up with the facilities earlier than the transit uh, facilities going on. And it would seem that all of those transit facilities are projects that are going to take years once construction starts. So there will be plenty of time to create an overlay for a facility that is about to be completed. If data at that time indicates that proximity to a transit stop like a BRT or a sounder station actually has proven to make sense for citing shelter locations. I, I think that's all hypothetical uh, at, at this point. But there are places to the north of us that are going to get their transit infrastructure much quicker than we will. And if they in fact, then we will be able to see how well it works that do shelter providers actually build them in the vicinity of those transit things? And do the users of shelters actually value that amenity? Or is there some other driver that should maybe drive an eventual future overlay of where we want to, to allow a, a shelter facilities? So I'm comfortable with, with, with D at this particular time and date.
Very good. Any further comments by members of the council? Councilmember Lorisella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. So as I understand it, there is existing land capacity to potentially meet these requirements that we're going to have within the existing restrictions that we have uh, long term, right? There are currently a number of hotels with beds and that sort of thing.
Getting a head nod from our community development director.
And uh, we can always revisit this in the next 20 years, since we're talking about something 2045 or later, uh, if things change and we need to make changes. And then my last thought is uh, to have things centrally located such that our services can be located or co-located with them uh, is an advantage as opposed to across the city. That way they can have faster response times to social services uh, and fix some fire should they need it. So I, for that reason, would be going with option D as well.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And just to clarify a question, based on the legislative changes that we reviewed with comp plan stuff that came down from Pierce County Regional Council, is it correct that within this potential option D area that we would then have to plan for what, 574 units of this particular type of housing?
Correct, Mr. Mayor, 574 units. There has to be identified capacity for by 2044. And looking at just the current location of hotels, which is often what is happening right now, where you have a, a housing provider purchase a, a hotel, revamp it and, and it turns into, it converts to emergency housing. Um, there are about twice as many units in Lakewood's hotel capacity than is needed for emergency housing, just where they are along Pacific Highway and South Tacoma Way.
Okay. Any further questions or comments of Ms. Spear? And just reminding all of us that this uh, on the table is a motion to amend ordinance 789 specifically with regard to the comprehensive uh, plan amendment 2023-05, which is part of the proposed ordinance. And the motion to amend is to include option D as in dog for that amendment 2023-05. Any further discussion on that? I just want to echo the comments of my councilmembers. I agree that option D makes the most sense uh, with regard to transit corridors. Since I am on the Pierce Transit Board, I could tell you that uh, plans change based on any number of factors, including input from the public and certainly available funding. And it is something that we can revisit if it makes sense down the road for purposes of ensuring adequate uh, access to both transit and services. So it's something that'll be available for further discussion, but this meets the intent of the uh, legislation. And I support option D. Unless there are any further discussion, all those in favor of the amendment to ordinance 789, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? We now turn to ordinance 789 as amended. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to um, say thank you to our staff and, and Ms. Spear in particular. There were some, even though most of these were fairly non-controversial, we're being made to do some of them. And I'm reading some of this and I'm like, oh, this is going to be great when uh, we actually get some of the stuff that the legislature has successfully crammed down our throat. Um, I do have real concerns um, in, in the, for the long term for our city, actually. Um, when it, when it comes to some of the things that we've had to accept uh, to put into our comp plan because of state law. But I do want to particularly note that um, Ms. Spear did a really nice job and staff in general did a really nice job in really helping out the um, in coming to a good agreement with the racket club. Because that thing had, had some issues. Suddenly there was, at a late point in time, all of a sudden there was a lot of hair on it and, and um, got that cleaned up. So I really, we really do appreciate the work on that and um, and getting that taken care of, I think, I hope to everybody's satisfaction. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Agreed. Thank you for all your good staff work on this and coordination with the Planning Commission. Okay, all those in favor of ordinance 789 as amended, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Ordinance 789 as amended has been adopted. Now turn to ordinance number 790. Adam Clerk.
Ordinance number 790, amending Lakewood Municipal Code Chapter 8.16, Public Nuisances.
Mr. Buwer, it looks like you're going to provide us an overview on this particular proposed ordinance.
Very, very briefly, this is a minor amendment to the Public Nuisance Code to include rental housing.
This was discussed at some length during the study session, correct?
There was some discussion at the study session, yes.
Uh, and just to refresh council's recollection, were there any proposed changes made following the discussion at the study session?
No.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Buwer on ordinance 790? If, Mr. Lorisella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Buwer, just to be clear, this would affect both rental housing and uh, privately owned homes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Privately owned homes that are being used as rentals, yes.
I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 790.
Okay.
Been moved by Councilmember Bell, seconded by Councilmember Branstadter. We adopt ordinance 790 as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Ordinance 790 has been adopted. We now turn to resolutions, resolution 2023-06. Madam Clerk.
Resolution number 2023-06, adopting the six-year 2024 through 2029 Transportation Improvement Program.
Very good. For this, we'll call on our Capitol Projects Manager Ted Hill for a brief overview.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor Moss and Council. We are at the final step in this process to update its uh, the six-year Comprehensive Transportation Improvement Program for the 2024 to, through 2029. Updating the program is an annual process required by statute meant to assure continued consistency with comprehensive planning, goals, and evaluate current transportation needs. The tip has been reviewed both by council during study session on June 12th and the Planning Commission on Ju- uh, June 7th. And advertised public hearing was held on June 20th. Besides the minor comments during study session, to date, no other comments warranting adjustments have been received. The request to council tonight is final adoption of the program through res- resolution 2023-06. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions council may have.
Do you recall any particular corrections or changes that have been made to this final uh, piece of legislation from the study session documentation?
Uh, just a couple of minor comments, Mr. Branstadter, on the um, what was completed and what wasn't. So that was actually what went to council at the last meeting was the adjusted.
Very good. In the absence of any further questions of Mr. Hill, do we have a motion to adopt resolution 2023-06? It's been moved by Councilmember Branstadter, seconded by Councilmember Lorisella, that we adopt resolution 2023-06. Any further discussion? Again, this has been reviewed at some length in study sessions and by our Planning Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Resolution 2023-06 has been adopted. I see that we have no unfinished business or new business to attend to. Is that correct, Ms. Kraus?
That is correct.
So it looks like we have uh, time on the docket for reports by you in your capacity as acting city manager. Laura, yours.
So just a reminder to Lakewood residents that legal fireworks can only be discharged in city limits on July 4th from 11 a.m. to, I'm sorry, from 11 a.m. to 11 p.m. It's illegal to discharge fireworks on any school grounds or park within the city or any city property or public right of way. Residents who wish to report a violation of the city's firework resolutions, regulations should go to www.fireworksreport.com. The site will take fireworks complaints through 6 a.m. on July 5th. Call 911 if there's a medical emergency, injury, or active fire. Any complaints after July 5th should be directed to the non-emergency line at 253-287-4455. The other item I have is just on upcoming events. From June 6th to September 19th at 2 p.m. till 7 p.m., we have the farmer's market at Fort Stillicum Park. On June 20th to August 29th, on Tuesdays between 6:30 p.m. and 8 p.m., we have the summer concerts for Fort Stillicum uh, Park Pavilion. And on July 11th, we have the harmonious funk, cover music from the 80s, 90s, and early 20s and current. July 18th, we have I-5, part of the America's First Corporation bands. And then we have Summer Fest on July 15th at Fort Stillicum Park. July 15th and July 16th, we have the JBLM Air Show and Warrior Expo featuring the USAF Thunderbirds at JBLM. And then finally, on July 27th, we have the Groundbreaking at Fort Stillicum Park Turf Fields Improvement Project at 5 p.m. And then the 6 p.m., we have the Mayor's Coffee House at Fort Stillicum Park Pavilion. And that concludes my update.
Well, thank you. Any questions of Ms. Kraus? Sorry? Mr. Branstadter, okay.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Spear. Ms. Kraus, uh, this week, last week, there were some announcements that were put out by the MultiCare Health System uh, to regarding there being that they were losing millions of, hundreds of millions of dollars um, um, annually. And they were going to be laying off people and having to take some austerity measures. We still have some MultiCare Health positions that augment our police department in the Behavioral Health Contact Team. Do we know how those positions, the ones that are vacant, uh, are impacted by all of this?
I have not heard of a report on how this impacts our uh, behavioral health team. So I do not have that information. I can follow up on that.
Thank you.
Any further questions of Ms. Kraus? Okay, if not, then let's turn to council comments. Mr. Branstadter, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Fourth of July is always a holiday that I look forward to and celebrate enthusiastically, and I intend to do that again tomorrow. That, I would note that on Thursday, I'm planning to attend the funeral for the sixteen-year-old homicide victim from a week ago that went on, and that funeral is going to be held out at the church in Lake City.
Thank you. Councilmember Boki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just SHAPE Meeting, our monthly SHAPE Executive Board meeting is Friday morning on the seventh, and we're going to discuss, there's going to be a presentation with the SHAPE Manager adopting a twenty twenty-four SHAPE work plan. And there's going to be a presentation on the Black Home Initiative presentation, and then there's executive board scheduling updates. That's all we got on Friday morning.
Thank you, Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to wish everyone a very safe and happy Fourth of July and to enjoy their fireworks from ten AM, you said, I believe, to eleven PM. Or is, is it eleven to eleven? So eleven AM to eleven PM. Thank you.
I hope you're on the ride along that evening so you can enjoy the ones at eleven thirty. Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following last week's joint meeting with Lakewood Water District, I was talking to the general manager, and he mentioned that Lakewood Water District has a couple of parcels near their Nyansah Park area water tower that they may be interested in finding a use for, which could include something like the city putting a park in that area. Looking at maps of the city, that specific spot is a mile away from the nearest park other than Saunders Park, which in my opinion doesn't necessarily qualify as a park because it doesn't get much use and is quite small. So I'd be interested in, in hearing other council members and the city leadership's thoughts on either the city acquiring that land or partnering with Lakewood Water District to develop play structures and other park-like amenities if Lakewood Water District were to retain ownership.
Very good.
Beyond that, real quick, I also want to echo what folks have said about a happy Fourth of July for our residents. Stay safe, and it's a great opportunity to meet your neighbors and have community gatherings. And a special thanks to our Lakewood Police Department and West Pierce, because they're going to have quite the day ahead of them usually. So it's supposed to be pretty hot, so make sure everyone stays hydrated as well.
Yep, very good. Just following up on Mr. Laura Sella's first comment, it takes, by our council rules, a couple, actually a consensus of council members to kind of direct the city manager to direct his staff to dig into the issue and expend some staff time on it, because that's really the next step, is to take a look at it and see how it might fit in with the park's legacy plan. So I would be all for that in terms of at least directing staff to initiate some work with the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, perhaps, or whatever the proper process would be to kind of vet that. Is there any other council member that would be interested in looking at that issue or having staff take a peek?
Thank you, Mayor. I would be interested in looking at that since I do live in that area, but my larger interest would be, I would want to ask the neighbors what they think about that area, about something like that be happening. So before you get too deep, I would like to know what community input is.
That could be part of parcel to the digging in.
Right. As long as that was a priority and something that was done, I think from the inception of it, then I would definitely love to look into that.
Okay. And even that's three, I need a fourth. Do we have anyone else interested in at least giving some staff time to the issue?
No.
Well, sounds good. Great. There you go, Ms. Kraus. Councilmember Anderson.
On Thursday, I attended the change of command of the Joint Base Garrison from Colonel Lamb to Colonel Kim. Colonel Lamb is staying on as Chief of Staff of First Corps. Colonel Kim has been here before, earlier in his career, and seems pleased to be back. So I look forward to getting to know him.
Great. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make some clarification on the comments made earlier in public comment. I think my comments was misunderstood. We did have some new people for the first time speaking at public comment, and my comments were, he made a comment that we don't say anything, and all I said afterwards was to clarify that there's no dialogue during public comment time. So I was not educating people that are do that on a regular basis. It was just for the new people coming in. We do not dialogue during public comment time.
I just have a couple of notes here on public comment tonight. The residents who spoke up about the most recent incident, I didn't even realize that there was another incident at Gravely Lake and one hundred and twelve as recent as May twenty-seventh, which I find troubling. So if we can get Mr. Bucic to come back to us, I, you know, it's obvious that the rock placement that exists is not sufficient, and I suggest we consider, you know, a beautiful placement of what we call BFRs, or larger rocks, boulders, if you will, that would stop a Mack truck if need be, because enough is enough in that intersection. Either the corner is problematic or, you know, people are stupid for sure, but we got to stop that and make these residents feel safe. I mean, if it was one time, that would be one thing, but this is like at least the third or fourth or fifth in memory in that intersection, and it's just enough's enough on that. And it would be great to find out what happened with the individual who ran through yet again without any sort of accountability. If he didn't get anything through the municipal court, that's a problem, and we need to find I was over at Fort Silicon Park for my usual Saturday run through the woods with some fellow friends, and I had a chance to look at the roundabout improvements and have to say, we're doing a good job there. It looks beautiful. I think that it's coming along quite well. I don't know if it'll be completely in at least asphalt to be for Summerfest. I had occasion to see a nice young couple that owns a house as you're coming up Angle Lane. It's kind of the last house in the corner there, right at the commencement of all the mess of construction. And I walked over just to ask them, how are you doing? How has the city treated you? How are the contractors treating you? And they were effusive with their praise. They really feel that they've been treated well by city staff and certainly by the contractor. If you look at that particular area, they have a new concrete sort of apron into their driveway, and there's a large portion of what is now, or always was, city right-of-way that kind of goes into their lawn area that the city apparently is going to hydroseed. And I thought, well, is it going to be watered? And it goes, no, no, it's not going to be watered, apparently. The city said that there isn't any water on that side. And I said, are you kidding me? They're going to hydroseed all of that and not maintain it with any sort of water? He said, well, that's what I'm told. So I said, well, I will find out, because that makes no sense to me to have all that effort into beautifying that location, most of which is going to be right-of-way hydroseeded with our public money and not maintained with any water, especially when we have the opportunity to extend a head or two over there. So I'd like to find out about that. That's silliness. And then in terms of, you know, advertising all things great at Fort Silicon Park, another question arose, gee, will we have a reader board there? And I said, well, we've had some discussion about reader boards. We've set aside funds for two, and we've directed staff to give us a recommendation on placement. Do we know where those are going to be yet? And Fort Silicon Park perhaps be one of the locations? Is that on the list? Do we have an idea before the next millennium where these reader boards might be placed? It would be great to know. And then finally, I will be on vacation for the next two weeks, physically out of the area, but if need be, I will certainly zoom in and either run the meeting or attend the meeting, but I will physically not be here during the next two meetings. So, yeah, exactly. Unless there are any other alibis, we will recess into executive session for approximately twenty minutes pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty dot one ten dot one sub I to discuss with legal counsel representing the city litigation or potential litigation. Council is not expected to take any action following the executive session other than to come back here and to adjourn the meeting. So with that, we will now be in recess. So with that, we will now be in recess.